Thank you everyone for attending tonight our November 21st Regular Commission Meeting. We have a call to the row. We have 12 out of 14 present, we have a quorum, we'll move forward. Well I ask that if everyone in here would please silence all your telephones. Also I want to remind you that all of our rules apply to Roberts Rules of Order unless superseded by the local rules of this commission. All the rules for public speaking are listed in the back of the room, we're going to hear to those, we're going to follow those, and each member will have three, or each person will have three minutes. Move down to number two, public comments regarding non-agenda items. Thank you Commissioner Walker.
Thank you Commissioners. A couple of months back we voted for the SROs in the school system, and I just want to bring up the fact that, you know, Marshall County High School, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Florida, the other one's in Kentucky, Great Mills High School which is in Maryland, Santa Fe High School in Texas, Appalachia High School in Georgia, they all had SROs. I just want everybody to read, I don't know why everybody have the thing that because you have SROs that you have false security that you won't have shootings, but you will, or possibly you could. I think we, and I'm not advocating get rid of them because every little protection is good, but we shouldn't stop only at that only. Training is what's going to stop these, what to look out for, because all these instances, there were warning signs that people missed, whether it was teachers, the guidance counselors, or the parents. I think we should go one step further and have training, whether it's a letter or whatever, what to look out for. Because I don't want everybody to just stop here and say SROs are going to stop them. And Georgia had two of them, and they still had the shootings. Now they probably would have had more people die if they were not there, but it won't stop somebody from going to school. So I think we ought to take the lead, and I don't care if anybody else don't have it, we can be the first. Somebody's got to be the first on anything. So I think training for, rather to parents, teachers, guidance counselors, of what to look for so you can prevent from ever happening. Because, I got document tape, you can look it up yourself though, but they say between 1980 and 2019 there was 133 school shootings. And there's also found between that, oh I'm sorry, that armed guards were not associated with a significant reduction in rates of injuries during the school mass shootings. And the rate of deaths was actually 2.83 times greater in schools with an armed guard. And political fact and also the Rand Corporation did their facts and also came out with the same conclusion. So I just don't want people to have this sense of security that we got SROs and it prevents shootings. I think we ought to go one step further and have training for the people what to look out for, so you don't have to come to that point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, we really appreciate that. Good words.
My name is Lindonoy, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. I would like again to talk about rules. We start every meeting and there's discussion about we've got rules for this and rules for that, and people need to know, some Commissioners need to know. You've been, it's been at least two years when the Rules Committee was appointed, I think, Bobby, I think you were chairman, at least part of the time, and it was said we're going to, we're going to put our rules in a book, put them online where people will know what's going on, or what the rules are, and that would be so helpful. I still see people saying, "I don't know what's going on with the bulk waste, I don't know what I can put out, how I have to separate it, what I have to do." That needs to be easily available to everybody. Now, I know there are ways to get to these things, but I'm talking about easily available and all put together. Your rules for Commission meetings, your rules for everything, your rules for public In fact, if we had those rules, we probably wouldn't be in the situation we are with the Road Commission. People that don't know that they only get paid if they attend a meeting.
Ms. Lindonoy, stay on point.
We also would have a county attorney that probably would have seen a private act for the county attorney, and he would have known not to double dip. So having rules is fine, but people have to know, and Commissioners have to know, and obviously elected officials have to know. Because you walk in here and you often don't know what the procedure is, and as I said, there are a lot of elected officials that don't know their duties, they don't know how their pay is determined, and it's very different. You have a couple of groups that are paid by the meeting, Road Commission, Solid Waste Board. You have other groups, and this is throughout the county, County Commission, City Council, School Board, their salary. It's different, and a lot of people don't understand that. They start griping about, well so-and-so gets paid whether they attend or not. Yeah, they do, because that's the law. And Road Commission, you've got to attend to get paid, that's the law, the private act. So I ask that you reinstate and start your Rules Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have anyone else for non-agenda items? State your name and address, please.
My name is Justine Jones, I live at 3436 Old Kentucky Road. I'm here again to speak against the proposed restrictions on permanently living in campers, whether on private property or in campgrounds. These policies infringe on property owners' rights, fail to account for modern realities, and create unnecessary hardships for those who choose alternative housing options. This issue goes beyond housing preferences, it's about personal freedom, property rights, and fair governance. First of all, I'm concerned about the suggestion that only specific sources of information on this topic are valid, while others are labeled as misinformation. In a democracy, we depend on access to a variety of perspectives to make informed decisions. Limiting acceptable input stifles public discussion and creates an echo chamber. As elected representatives, it's your responsibility to ensure an open and transparent process that values diverse viewpoints. Furthermore, some Commissioners propose that people wishing to live in campers should do so in campgrounds for a fee. With respect, this feels like serious overreach. If a property owner can securely and responsibly live on their own land without violating safety and health standards, why should they be forced to pay to live somewhere else? Campgrounds are not a viable or affordable solution for everyone, and this approach prioritizes revenue over property rights. In addition, the argument that this law has existed for decades doesn't make it right or reasonable today. Campers from the 1990s are worlds apart from modern campers. Many contemporary campers rival traditional housing in safety, efficiency, and sustainability. Enforcing obsolete regulations based on outdated assumptions is not a fair or effective approach. Consequently, I can't help but question whether these restrictions are tied to property taxes, especially when campers often result in lower property taxes compared to traditional ones. Why has this gone unenforced for over 30 years? Suddenly targeting citizens and property owners now feels arbitrary and punitive. Individuals and landholders have made investments in life decisions based on the freedom to use their camper or land as they see fit within reasonable health and safety guidelines. Changing the rules now infringes on our rights and undermines the trust we place in local government to serve its constituents fairly. Instead of enforcing these restrictive and outdated laws, I urge the Commission to consider a balanced approach. If there are legitimate concerns about sanitation and safety, those can and should be addressed. Reconsider this enforcement and work toward a solution that respects property owners' rights, reflects the realities of modern living, and truly serves the interests of this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items? State your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
598 Ripeto. I told this to the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I'm telling you all, God has told me to quit warning you all about what you're doing to these people, that He will take care of it Himself. And I can tell you right now, there's two of you all that is going to be voting yes on keeping rules and regulations the same, that you're playing with your souls. There is going, the people that has gotten letters, there's probably 40 of them, but if you vote yes on these rules and regulations to stay the same, you're going to be kicking out over hundreds of people that's living in campers and tiny homes in Hamlin County. It's cold outside, do y'all want to go outside and put your coat on and stay out there for an hour? Because I guarantee you, you'd be froze. And when you kick these people out of their homes, y'all probably give them 90 days to get out. It's still going to be cold then. So when you lay your head down in your warm bed at night, you think about those people that don't have a home or a warm bed, and you're trying to take it away from hundreds of them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items? Please state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Sandra Marshall, 5111 Union Grove Road. And I would just like to remind you of a story my mother told me when I was young about a charitable Christian heart. You never know when that person who stands in front of you may look like a young lady with a TBI. In fact, it may be an angel in disguise testing your Christian heart. And I just don't see you guys, I don't understand where all this hard-heartedness comes from. I just don't. And I just feel like, how are you going to feel when you stand in front of your maker and he said, "I came to you as a father with a disabled son, I came to you as a young lady with a TBI, I came to you as an old man ready to die, wanting to die in my home, and you turned me away." How are you going to feel when, no matter what good works you've done in his name, all your life? And I would like to point out, yes, I'm a sinner, and if you think God doesn't use sinners, you're crazy. Sinners are all God has to use, He has to use sinners, it's all He's got, He has no choice. So I would just remind you that when you're looking at that person, they may look like a poor insignificant beggar to you, but that may be the Lord in disguise, it could be an angel in disguise, you could be tested. I don't want to stand in front of the Lord one day and say, "Oh well, that old man, you know, he was just an old man." It don't matter. I'd give somebody my life's dollar if I thought they needed it worse than me, because you never know who that person is, who sent that person, and what their agenda may be, and how bad it's going to come back and bite you in the butt when it's too late to make amends for it. I would urge you, please, don't do this to these people, take into account circumstances. Don't kick a sick old man in his 80s out of his home. Honestly, how much longer do you think that old man's going to live? Honestly. And you want to kick him out of his home when he's at the bottom end of his life? How's he going to feel when he goes up to heaven and says, "Well, you know, what they done to me, it's not going to look good on any of you." And I don't want you to do that, I really don't, because it's not good. To be a Christian, as most of, as far as I know, all of you have been. When I ask people about you, even Mr. Cusshall, the mayor, they tell me what a wonderful, God-fearing people you are, and it just blows my mind because I'm trying so hard to see it, but I don't. And I've prayed about it, and my mother and father-in-law love you, Mr. Cusshall, they love you, they have nothing but wonderful things to say about you, so I'm trying to keep an open mind and to see what they see, because they are wonderful people, and I value their input and their opinion of people, because they know. But I just would urge you, don't fall into a trap, don't fall into Satan's trap of turning your back on those in need.
Time's up.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bless your Lord.
Anyone else on non-agenda items? State your name and your address.
My name is Delbert Nix, I live at 335 Macedoni Road. I've been a Road Commissioner for 20 years. And I got elected in 2004, Charles Anderson, Tom Hite, Barry Poehl, E.C. Long, and all. When I come Road Commissioner in 2004, they didn't even bring up this private act. And I've got the minutes from the time I got elected to now, and I can show that the private act was never brought up in our meetings. To be honest about it, I think the County Commission here ought to be under a private act. If you miss any meetings, like everybody told me, if you miss any meeting, you should have to pay your money back to the state or the county, taxpayer. And I do think it's wrong for Mike Richardson there, I've told him to his face, and even in the minutes, in our meetings, I don't think it's right for him being a County Commissioner, getting paid $500 a month plus insurance, and going out to the Hamlin County Highway Department and working. I don't think that's right. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items?
Lynn Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I think people should be told about the rules. You should read them yourself, get the rules and read them yourself. And furthermore, I think you should grandfather in campers, just like you grandfathered in junkyards in my community, and they're still coming in. You still let them in. I see them, I know. I don't appreciate it, I didn't like it, you wouldn't like it if it went in your community. That's why I moved. I couldn't get it cleaned up, so I moved, and nobody else cared, none of you all cared, or any of the other county commissioners cared.
Ms. Holden, address the Commission Chair, please.
Or any of the other county commissioners cared. I'm just looking, I'm letting them see that I don't care to look them in the eye, and let them know that wrong is wrong and right is right. And if you don't believe me, when Judgment Day comes, you'll see, because God's the judge, not me. I'm just the fruit inspector.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else on non-agenda items? See none? We'll take up agenda items now, anyone wish to address anything on the agenda? Okay, see none? Okay, sorry.
My name is Justine Jones, 3436 Old Kentucky Road. I would like to speak about the possible recommendations for District 9 seat. I appreciate y'all's commitment to appointing a representative for District 9 who will serve the community with integrity, accountability, and independent thought. As you consider candidates for this critical role, I would like to share my perspective on the three possible recommendations being discussed tonight. Danny Bell has demonstrated behavior that raises serious concerns about his trustworthiness and ethical judgment. The fact that he fraudulently accepted funds for meetings he did not attend reflects a disregard for the responsibility of public office and the trust of the community, especially when he admits knowing of the private act. We cannot afford to have someone in a leadership position who knowingly acts against the public's interest. Such actions cannot be overlooked. Matt John Cox, while potentially well-intentioned, has a track record of simply following directives, rather than contributing independent ideas or standing up for what's right. We already have enough Representatives who lack the willingness to think independently or challenge the status quo. Appointing another would not address the unique challenges our county faces. Billy Gully, though not a perfect option, stands out as the best candidate among the three. He has demonstrated a willingness to think critically and act in the community's best interest. With no other viable candidates under consideration, I believe he is the most suitable choice to bring fresh perspective and integrity to the role. I hope you appoint someone who will prioritize accountability, fairness, and a proactive leadership for District 9. Our community deserves nothing less. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else with agenda items?
Mr. Bobby, can they turn that mic up any?
This one?
That one.
That one? I don't know. Can you turn this mic up?
Thank you.
All right, talk louder.
Lindonoy, 2343 Joe Stevens Road, I too would like to talk about the District 9 appointment. I share some of the concerns that have been expressed. I would like to point out that regarding former Road Commissioner Danny Bell, he missed more meetings than any other Road Commissioner in the last six years. He was paid for those meetings, and then, when miraculously this private act was discovered, and I thank Glenn Holden and Commissioner Green in large part for that, he was sent an invoice, and he was asked to pay the county $2,852.73. I understand he paid that, that's good. But what about the 800 or more dollars that he was paid for four meetings that didn't even take place? He hasn't paid that back unless there's something that's happened in the last week or so. Again, it gets back to integrity, to knowledge of what's going on. And I forgot one thing that I'm sure you would want to know. When all this came up, they appointed, at least Commissioner Hite did, said, "Mr. Bell, you go take care of figuring out how much everybody owes." He had all the books, access to all records. He turned in a sheet that said Danny Bell owes $1,700. I have no idea where he got that, because as we all know, when they did a count, he had missed 11 meetings. Aren't you the one that was saying, "Everybody silence your phones?"
Stay on task, please.
I know. He had to pay 2,852, and still, that 800 is outstanding. We need fresh faces, and Danny Bell is not a fresh face, nor does he present a good track record regarding attendance and honesty and integrity. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on agenda items? See none? We'll move down to the nomination and appointment of our new District 9 County Commissioner. Let me state a few things, what we'll do, we'll take nominations, if we get one, it's pretty easy, we get two, we'll vote on that, that'll be pretty easy. If we get three nominations or more, then it may be a process of voting over and over. And what we'll do is, as we vote, we have to have a seven majority. There's 13 of us active, so we have to have, that person has to have seven votes to win. If nobody out of the first round gets seven votes, the lowest vote getter will be eliminated, and we'll move forward until we have a clear, simple majority to pick from. All right? So at that point, or at this point, we will open the floor for nominations for the District 9 County Commission seat.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Danny Bell to fill that position, please, sir.
We have Danny Bell nomination. Do we have any other nominations?
Yeah.
Ms. Howell.
Yes, sir, I was going to nominate Billy Gully.
Billy Gully is here, been nominated. Do we have any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Cox.
All right. Mr. Harwell nominates Mr. John Cox. And Mr. John Cox is present, do we have anyone else, any other nominations? I'll ask for a motion to close nominations.
So move.
Ms. Howell, do I have a second? Mr. Horner, nominations are closed. We'll do this by roll call vote. Commissioners, just clearly state the full name or the last name of your...
He can't hear you, dear.
I couldn't hear you names if...
Oh, I'm sorry. State the name, the last name or the full name, first and last name, at least the last name of your choice.
Okay.
Okay? Got it?
Got three nominations.
Got three nominations, Danny Bell, Billy Gully, and Mike John Cox. Ms. Green.
Chairman Hahn, are you going to give any one of us the opportunity to speak for discussion,
We can keep it short, yes.
Okay. First of all, I saw the records. As far as accountability, Mr. Bell stated he knew all about the private act, but he took the money anyway. Now, for my part, I like honesty and integrity, and anybody that would take the money, knowing that it was only if you were present attending that meeting, is not a good fit for accountability or transparency. I'm a firm believer, we need to set an example, regardless of what our life is, we need to set an example. And for my part, I cannot vote for somebody that took the money and wouldn't keep it had it not been brought up. He took it for six, God bless him, years, and they've been more than one spoke about this issue tonight. It needs to be brought up and cleared. That discussion has still never come to County Commission, and you can't... And you can't even get the records to the mayor's office to find out anything right now about it. But we don't need someone to sit on the commission that has demonstrated dishonesty, lack of integrity, and intent. That's Hamlin County citizens' money, and it was illegal as the devil.
Anyone else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doughty? The reason that I nominated Mr. Bell is two-faceted. Although there's a lot of conjecture as far as the flaws, those same statements would be made in a court of law that got overturned if it went. It is one side's outlook. And everybody has a right to their opinion. The main reason that I nominated Mr. Bell is his accounting background. We need people on this body that are good with numbers, are good with figures. Mr. Bell worked in accounting for his entire career in private sector, and I think that would make him a marvelous fit for this commission. Plus the fact that when the bill came out and was sent to him, he sent a check immediately as to that amount. And that is my reasoning behind it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. You had your chance. We're gonna move on. Anyone else want to add anything? You can hit your request to speak or raise your hand, either one.
After everybody has a shot, I would like one more shot for a vote, please.
Very quickly, one short statement.
Well, the fact is, yes, he's got an accounting background, but the sheet he submitted the first time was $1,700. And the last time I checked, in profit and loss, $2,800 was a whole lot more.
Okay, that's one person's opinion versus another. We're not gonna get into that. We're gonna start...
It'll be the end.
That's a fact.
That'll be the end.
All right?
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Call the roll. We have a motion, a second, yes, to close the nomination, yes.
Ms. Howell made the motion, Mr. Horner second.
Debbie Ahern?
Danny Bell.
Thomas Doughty?
Danny Bell.
Edna Green?
Mr. Gully.
Gully, okay.
I'm sorry, I should've spoke louder. I apologize, Mr. Bobby.
Stan Harville?
Mr. John Cox.
Bobby Hahn?
Mr. Gully.
Tim Horner?
Danny Bell.
Joe Huntsman?
Mr. Gully.
Peggy Howell?
Mr. Gully.
Rodney Long?
Mr. Danny Bell.
Mike Richardson?
Mr. Danny Bell.
Kyle Walker?
Danny Bell.
Wayne Neesmith?
Mr. John Cox.
We have, Mr. Bell got six votes, Mr. Gully got four votes, Mr. John Cox got two. As per my instructions, before we started, Mr. John Cox will be eliminated. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate that. We'll revote with either Danny Bell or for Billy Gully.
Debbie Ahern?
Danny Bell.
Thomas Doughty?
Danny Bell.
Edna Green?
Mr. Gully.
Stan Harville?
Mr. Bell.
Bobby Hahn?
Mr. Gully.
Tim Horner?
Danny Bell.
Joe Huntsman?
Get it, corner.
Who'd you say, I'm sorry?
Yeah, Gully.
Peggy Howell?
Mr. Gully.
Rodney Long?
Danny Bell.
Mike Richardson?
Mr. Danny Bell.
Wayne Neesmith?
Mr. Gully.
Kyle Walker?
Danny Bell.
Vote is seven for Mr. Bell, five for Mr. Gully. Mr. Gully, I appreciate your interest and your hard work. But the position will now go to Mr. Danny Bell, will be our new District 9 County Commissioner. Congratulations, and we welcome you aboard. If you'll step into the well... There she is, Ms. Bonneface, Judge Bonneface.
It's absolutely fine.
Do you have any family you want to join you? Yeah, bring her on, that. She looks very nice tonight. She'll offset you a little bit. Fifty years. Well, that in itself is a major accomplishment.
I, Danny Bell...
I, Danny Bell...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity...
That I will perform with viability...
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office...
To which I have been appointed...
To which I have been appointed...
And which I am about to assume...
Which I'm about to assume...
I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
To support the Constitution's...
To support the Constitution...
Of Tennessee and the United States...
Of Tennessee and the United States.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the...
I'm sorry. And to faithfully perform the duties...
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Of the Office of County Commissioner.
Representing...
Representing...
The Ninth District of Hamlin County, Tennessee.
Of Hamlin County, Tennessee.
All right, congratulations. You're down to District Nine.
Sign your name first.
Here it is.
There's a... You want a blue pen?
We got one right there.
Okay, very good. Well... Now, yours is dead. Tell it's time to turn it over. Yours is out, too?
I was gone.
That's it? Good to sod you. I've been waiting to say that.
Thank you, I didn't notice that.
We're having a little technical difficulty here.
I'm gonna use, uh...
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Reed.
Okay.
I'll use mics here. We're good. We'll share.
We got it covered on this side. We'll have to double up, I guess.
That trip is in here.
You gotta be different.
All right, I think we've got things sorted out to some degree, anyway. Now, call on Mr. Thomas Doughty, Chairman of our Calendar and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
What am I doing? What are we doing?
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Doughty?
Start over. Item 4A is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any comments? Let's vote to motion.
13 yeas, zero nays.
Item 4B is the approval of the regular calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Mr. Doughty, do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Tim Horner, sorry. Any comments or questions? Let's vote to motion.
13 yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. You know you have, Mr. Reed.
Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll have...
It's all right. Thank you, sir. Nothing under items to be removed from the consent calendar. We'll now move down to the approval of the consent calendar. And I make a motion that we approve. I can't make a motion, that's right. Need a motion, Thomas Doughty?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Debbie Ahern? Any comments or anything here? Let's vote to motion.
13 yeas, zero nays.
We have a 6.5, kind of off the record, on the record, top deal. I'm gonna ask Director of the EMA, Chris Bell, if you'll come up and give us a recap on the disaster, relief, the cleanup, and so forth.
Sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to go through these and just give you a quick synopsis. We have what's called a disaster recovery center. I mentioned it earlier. It is open in the bottom of the Morristown Utilities old facility, actually in their community room. FEMA's set up there with the Small Business Administration. They have served 45 impacted individuals in Hamlin County so far. God's Warehouse, I know I mentioned it when I was up here before, but they have opened up three other warehouses. It's what I'm gonna be sharing in the midst of all what has gone wrong, there's a lot of good that has come out of this. And we have seen Hamlin County just respond in a way that is amazing. So I just wanna really, you're gonna hear a lot of good, a lot of praise, especially through God's Warehouse and Tennessee Baptist Disaster Relief. They're working on three homes. One of recognize, I know there's several contractors, several individuals that have assisted farmers, people to remove debris, to bring it to the right of way. But one in particular is while-building contractors. They are actually supplying labor and materials to those three houses out there to help them rebuild those houses. Been just an incredible, churches in the area have given, it's just been an outpouring of supplies and needs that's so overwhelming that we're helping Unicoy, Carter, Johnson, all those other counties just shipping out all kinds of supplies. The Road Department, I wanna recognize Mr. Richardson and Mr. Wise Carver. They've been doing a phenomenal job. They've been working with USDA, working on trying to get some engineers to help with the debris at one of the areas, one of the culverts, working with PA and debris. On that note, Mayor Cutshaw and myself have been working. I don't know how to say this in a good way. We're somewhat, don't know why, we were left out of a contract that T-Dot did to help the counties remove debris. T-Dot is mainly, as you all know, work only state roadways. Within this contract, they wrote it to where they could also spill over into county roadways for the counties that were affected. Somehow, we were left off. But we have tried to rectify that, and they're trying now, T-Dot with the help of FEMA and the state, are trying to add us back into that contract to assist with debris removal. So Mr. Richardson is aware of that, and we're just waiting for that contract to be amended. Couple other things. We, the city and the county of Morristown Utilities have all begun the public assistance process. That's to show what we did, what we've expended for taxpayer dollars to try to get reimbursed for those. That's a long process, and we've just begun. But we had what's called a scoping meeting. I wanna recognize Ms. Hell and Mr. Fox. Mr. Fox has undertaken that task with a lot of paperwork and a lot of headache, and I just wanna recognize him. He's doing a phenomenal job so far. Couple other things. At the end, East Tennessee Foundation, Mayor Cutshaw and I met with them the other day. There may be some grants available that I'm trying to follow up on to help some of the farmers. As you all know, out in the South End, we have large and small farmers. So we're trying to help some of those smaller ones, USDA and FSA. Farm Services are working with those large farmers, small to some degree, but they're still in the process. And there's just a lot to do with that across that area. Going back to one other piece, hay, fencing, and all other materials have been provided to some of our local farmers to help them, those who have lost hay, to reimburse that. And the last piece is, I just wanna recognize someone. I know I've mentioned him several times, but Mayor Cutshaw was thrown into the fire pit right off the bat, not knowing anything, not being trained in a lot of this. He has jumped in with both feet and has performed, from my viewpoint, just exceptionally. I really appreciate him. He's taken meetings. He's hit the ground running and really helped this county tremendously. Wanna say that as I've listened and watched him and other things, you would be proud that he's handled himself professionally. And without having a lot of knowledge, he is grabbing hold of that quickly. I'm not sitting here trying to fluff him. I just think you need to know that behind the scenes, what he's been doing. That's my report. Is there any questions? Can I add one other piece to this?
You got it.
I think the gentleman that came up and talked about our SROs in the schools, I think if you'll allow me, Chairman, just real quick.
Oh, please, I was gonna...
We are addressing that. I know Mr. Cribbly over here can speak to that about the drills. So just so that you all know, and I know some of you do, but they're doing drills. SROs are working with the schools to do active shooter drills. And we have gone the extra step. If these floods hadn't occurred that very day, as the sheriff can allude to, we were getting ready to do a full-scale active shooter drill at West High School. That was going to encompass all the other schools, their administration. We had people from the state coming. So that, I know that sometimes that information doesn't get pushed out there, but just so the community and you know, we are working to make sure our schools, our teachers, our staff, administration are prepared because an active shooter is hard. It's not like a tornado that you go one, two, three. You know exactly what to do. It's not like a fire, "Well, I do this, this, and this." Critical thinking is the most important component to train on in active shooter. And we're trying to do that with our schools. And I wanna commend both our Sheriff's Department and PD. We work together really well to try to do this. So, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much for adding to that. I know that was a concern, and we appreciate Mr. Pelican for bringing that up. Appreciate you answering that question.
And we are rescheduled for the spring with West High.
And we do appreciate our law enforcement for making it happen. Thank you so much. Move down to item seven. We will recess as the Hamlin County Legislative Body and convene as the Hamlin County Beer Board. Item 7A, a beer permit to Mr. Patel, Reed's Chapel, 02 Incorporated, 2875 Reed's Chapel, Moorestown, Tennessee, 37813. Do we have any discussion from the public? Anyone to talk on this or address this? Okay? Do we have any commissioners need to? Okay? We'll now reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body. Move down to number eight. The beer permit for Mr. Patel, Reed's Chapel, 02 Incorporated, 2875 Reed's Chapel Road, Moorestown, Tennessee, 37814. We need a motion for this.
Still move, Mr. Chairman?
Have a motion, Mr. Doty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Horner, second. Okay, do we have any discussion on this, commissioners? Mr. Doty?
As I sent out, most of you, I think all of you guys should have gotten it. I looked into this because I was the one that brought up the issue. Well, excuse me, Mr. Pelletier brought it up, but I mentioned it in the commission, and we tabled this because of the zoning of the property. I have talked to Mr. McKinney with our planning department. That property has, as far back as we have records since we established zoning, has never been rezoned. So, this body has given permits to this establishment with the R1 zoning that was in effect. So, that really takes that out of our hands as far as being able to deny it for that reason as of right now. And that is why I made the motion as such. There may be other avenues that someone wants to look into or address, but as for the one that I brought up and it was tabled because of, that one is Nolan Boyd at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. There's no more comments?
Wait a minute. I didn't, okay, yeah. Yes, sir. There we go. Okay.
Ms. Hale?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, it's an R1, is that, that's residential? Do we have others in residential?
We don't have anybody here from planning right now.
Yes.
There are other?
The old three-way market on Springville Road, which is the same owner, for sure, as this one here.
Well, I guess I kind of wonder, going forward. Well, I don't know. It's kind of a little bit of a can of worms, isn't it?
Yep.
Unfortunately, I think it's a can of worms we were handed.
Yes, sir.
We've already set precedent.
Well, I understand, okay, let's suppose, okay, we have set precedence. Now, do you stop it? I mean, can you say, well, that's that? I mean, can you say, okay, because we did and so we will, but do we want to go forward? I mean, do we, can we say that's it? That'll be the last one? Or how do you do that? How do we?
As long as they fall under the guidelines and the precedent, then we cannot deny them.
Commissioner Hale?
Thank you, sir.
And just to address this, that talking with the planning, they are looking at approaching these folks and rezoning to A1, those that can't. A1 is a zone that holds this capability. It has been oversight through the years, but the fact that they've been able to operate over the years, I think Commissioner Doty is correct, that you can't deny it on those grounds.
Yes, sir.
So, in order to clean it up, I did ask the planning commission to look and see if there's a way that we can move forward and rezone these properties to remove that notion.
Okay. Okay, so for now, it's sort of, I'm all about that, but I mean, if somebody came up tomorrow and said, well, I have an R1.
No, ma'am, that would not hold water because they're not already there.
Yes, sir, I got it.
All right, these places are established.
Yes, sir.
And those are the ones that I think the planning will look at moving forward on the rezon for that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
We had the same issue with the old rendezvous when it became Pizza Cottage.
Right.
Established that precedent.
Ms. Green?
Chairman Hahn. We have the county attorney with us. Can we ask him the question about how this will affect us further down the road and what ramifications we can look at from this? Please, since he's present.
Mr. Capps wishes to address that?
You know, the last time I answered one of Mrs. Green's questions, it was strictly for Ms. Green, but I'm going to answer this one for the committee.
Ask him to come up to the mic where everybody can hear.
I'm pretty loud, I want to stand right here. The zoning that is R1 with this particular store, as has been stated, it has had a beer permit forever. For that reason, Ms. Hale, we cannot deny them a beer permit.
Thank you.
Get the chance to record. The judge sitting right there where Chairman Hahn would sit would strike that down and give them their beer permit.
Yes, sir.
That's just a situation. I think it would be wise, as Mayor Cutshaw says, for planning to rezon those that are not properly zoned, zone them A1, so that we don't have this problem in the future. And though R1, I don't think we'll ever get another beer permit if they haven't had one in the past.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Attorney Capps.
Mr. Long?
I just want to clarify. I was thinking A1, I'm pretty sure that I misspoke there on the R1. I think that's A1 on Springville, just wanted to correct that.
Okay, thank you.
Problem. Okay. Nothing else, we'll vote the motion.
Nineteen yeas, four nays.
Motion passes. Move down to item nine, Justice Center Public Safety Committee. Chairman Tim Horner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 8A, no, I'm sorry, item 9A, the Construction Change Directive, number one, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We don't have a name. There it is, okay, we got it. We had a little pause there. All right, thank you, Mr. Long. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have any discussion? Ms. Green?
I have a question. I don't know if it would go to Chairman Horner, if it would go to someone else. My question is, from what the gentleman said the last meeting we were in, this is a design plan. So, my question is, when are we going to start negotiating this with the contract attorney that we hired quite a while back? Mayor Britton kept promising us a report, and unfortunately, Mayor Britton is gone, which unfortunately lands it in Mayor Cutshaw's lap. But when are we going to get a report to know exactly how this stands? No offense intended, but that was a humongous amount. And it's, we just need to know what's what. And our citizens should not have to foot any of that bill. Hundred ninety-two thousand's a lot of money.
Mr. Cutshaw, do you have anything?
May I have a minute, please? Yes, I can answer that. As we said in our committee meetings, and we'll repeat, that everything that's on this list will go to the architect at the end of the project or go for debate. It's been stated many times that there is monies that will be reclaimed for these misses. Don't know what that figure is. When the project ends, when it gets near its completion, it will go, as it's been said many times.
Thank you, Mayor.
Chairman Hahn. May I ask the mayor one more question because we were discussing it before the meeting? Any idea on the contract there? Do we have any penalties? I'm sure you know above all people because you're very, well, you're very knowledgeable.
You said it was unfortunate. I was mayor, I'm not sure where you're going with this.
I didn't, not if I said that, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
My apologies. I want to know if there's a penalty in that contract. Me and Mr. Walker was talking before the meeting. Is there a penalty if it's not finished on time or if it's running behind?
Yes, ma'am, that's two different things, but yes, ma'am, there is a penalty for that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get a copy of that to see what it is, sir?
It's in the contract. I can tell you right now, if you want to take my word for it.
That would be nice, thank you.
Currently, it's a thousand dollars a day from Blaine Construction for being over the due date.
How many days are we over?
Ma'am, if you had paid attention, it's September the 30th. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Naismith? Do we have a running list of all the changes that's been made? There, who, if he, Horner shaking his head, who's got that?
The attorney.
The attorney? Which attorney?
Our attorney in Burwell.
The construction attorney.
Construction attorney?
Yes.
That we hadn't heard from.
We've seen bills.
We will.
I don't want to get down to the end of the road. This thing gets built, find out we left something out. Back, go back in the days when we bought the doors and they had change notice come through. The doors didn't have the doorknobs on them, didn't have the doorstops on them, didn't have the hinges. And this commission voted that we'd foot the bill for that. And that's an architect's responsibility to put doorknobs, door handles, stops, and everything else on them.
It is, it is, and they did put them on. They didn't charge us for them and then charged us again. They just failed to itemize them. Okay? And you can't, we can't make them pay that. That's called unjust enrichment. That's unjust enrichment, okay? So, we only paid for what we would have paid for anyway. They didn't get anything.
Okay.
No hood in there.
Attorney's got all that.
Yes.
One comment, please, sir. It has been pricey all the way through, and it might have been unjust enrichment, but evidently, they hadn't built very many jails when they were chosen, or they wouldn't have missed all that. Thank you.
Well, I think it's an unfair statement. I think they've done an outstanding job, a job of this magnitude. There's going to be some misses, and we have to be aware of that. We knew, we were aware of that going in. Okay? No one else? Let's vote this motion.
Eleven yeas, two nays.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Horner. Move down to the Public Services Committee. Chairman Mike Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A, surplus items for EMA, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? C-9, let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Item 10B, approval of the 2025 regularly scheduled meetings of the Hamlin County Commission and Committees, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? I'm assuming everyone has a copy of those dates. No discussion, let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 10C, Order Establishing Work Release Commission, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We do have a motion. We do have a second. Have any comments? C-9, let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Moving down to number 11, Finance Committee. Chairman Rodney Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go to 11A, Resolution 24 dash 32. The resolution authorizing Hamlin County to apply for a grant from the Tennessee Opiate Abatement Council to establish the county's jail-to-work program. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have any questions or discussion?
Just a point there, Mr. Chairman, to expand, not establish.
That's correct. The jail-to-work program?
Yeah, to expand the jail-to-work program, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harville.
Semantics, but.
Thank you.
No questions? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
11B, Resolution 24 dash 33. Resolution authorizing participation in the Correctional Career Pathway Program for male jail inmates, offered by the Tennessee Institution of Public Health at East Tennessee State University. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? C-9, let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
11C, Third Judiciary District Recovery Court Expansion Project. We will vote on C1, Agreement for Professional Services, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
C2, Contract for Professional Consulting Services, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Naismith?
What is that professional consulting service?
That service, when this contract is to go out to the Helen Ross McNabb Center to contract for these services of a qualified therapist. That's what that'll be for. This grant will be contracting with Helen Ross McNabb, most likely to provide the services of therapeutic services that we don't have within our county.
We don't have that now.
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you.
No one else? Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
Move to 11D, Budget Amendments. Number one is the Hamlin County Department of Education Budget Amendment Number Four. It's an increase of $5,565,971.56, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Comments? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Move to D2, Fund 101, Probation Services of $150,000, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
11D3, Fund 128, Drug Use Abatement Fund of $150,000. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any questions? Let's vote the motion. Let's vote the motion.
Twelve yeas, one nay.
Motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Move down, we have an add-on here, a presentation from Mike Richardson on, it's actually an
So, thank you for your time. This is a, an update on some of the road paving projects that we've had going on. The commission approved nine hundred thousand dollars for us to go Phase One and part of Phase Two. We have four hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank account that we could use. To date, we spent three hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars out of the 176 fund, and we've got some photos that we can throw out here. But basically, that has the Phase One roads, which were Lake Park Circle, Timber Creek, Rustic Circle, Pine Bear, Country Road, Phase Two, a portion of Chucky River Road, and we were able to find enough money inside the 450 to do Lowland Pike. This is, you'll see on the screen here, this is some of the prep work that we've done. You can just roll through these. More prep work, that was Chucky River. This is some of the prep work where the paving company came in pre, you know, to pre-pave. That's some of the paving work going on in progress. This is where we had on Chucky River Road, we had some, they found a water leak somehow that had some chlorine in it, and we're digging some stuff out to kind of try to mitigate It's a paving crew from our awarded paving, we award our paving club projects, or at least the crews, in April, and that was A-PAC Harrison Group. More, more paving work going on. That's a specific mix that we use, is a CW mix. It's basically two and a half inches thick there. Again, just more, more paving work. That was Lowland Pike there, out by Union Heights School. We started striping Chucky Pike and Lowland Pike today. It should be finished in the next week or so with that, just, just more of the finished So, any questions, comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
You stated during one of the road commission meetings that you just used different grades of paving, depending on what road. Do they use different grades as well, or do they stick with one standard grade?
No, they, we tell them what grade we want, what mix we want to call it. So, we use two particular mixes on this, this project, a C mix and a CW mix. It's all standard mixes, and it's nothing that we've concocted on our own, it's just a standard mix.
Mr. Naismith?
Mike on Lowland Pike, I went out by there about a month ago, and I looked, and they patched Lowland Pike, you know, six, seven feet wide, up to a hundred and fifty feet. Why did we do the, all the patchwork and then come back and pave it?
So, to make sure that the paving, the finished coat, is able to withstand everything, we have to go in and dig out the old, if it's bad. We'll either mill it out or dig it out, depending on what the substrate is. So, that's, that's typical, that's standard procedure, so that you don't pave over a bad spot.
I didn't see where they dug out anything.
Well, on that particular road there, there was nothing bad enough to dig it out. We were able to take our milling machine that the commission proved a couple years ago, you know, take our milling machine and mill it out, smooth it back up, and then they come in and put a, the finished coat on it. This, these projects here, we've used about three thousand five hundred and thirty tons of asphalt in those seven roads. And that's, that's happened since September.
Anyone else?
No, I got it.
One other thing, if you'll allow, about the brush collection. I know we've been getting a lot of phone calls about, from the community, about, why aren't you picking up this? Still, we're under the, like Mr. Bell said, we are under direction, if you will, from FEMA, TEMA, all these four-letter government agencies to get all the vegetated debris that we can into the approved TDEC burn site. So that's why we've not been collecting some of the C and D waste, the bulk waste. The first six days of this event, we took 77 loads to the landfill, which is 275 tons. It's about 1,550 yards, cubic yards, that we took to the landfill before the TDEC burn site was approved. Since the burn site has been approved, that, we started that on about 10, 4, October the 4th, to, to November the 1st, we've placed about 6,600 cubic yards to the burn site. And then, we're still waiting on the final, but probably to date, we've had another, probably 3,500 to 4,000 cubic yards that we put to the burn site, the TDEC approved burn site. And we still have probably another three or four weeks, depending on what we, effort we get in from TDOT, or USDA, or FEMA. We've asked them for help. We've been having meetings, several meetings a week with all these agencies to try to bring help to us. And part of that help is cleaning up debris. The other part of it is, we had a, Spencer Hill Road has been, we're going to have to pave part of it again, or pave part of it because it's washed out, and, you know, that's not in our budget. So we're trying to find some way to help, you know, bring some money in so we can get this approved, or get it paid for. That's all I have. I just, it's just an update.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We really appreciate that.
Chairman Hahn?
Yes.
Matt, I asked something while he's, he brought up a subject that I'm getting a lot of phone calls from, and that's on the bulk waste.
Right.
And we're the, I know you're making every effort, but I have people that do not understand. They haven't gotten the information, because a lot of people don't take the Tribune for the simple fact it's got more news about Rutledge and Newport than it does Hammond County. But they, they don't know what they can put out and what they can't. Is there any way at some point that the, I know you guys have garbage and highway both, but is there some way at some point that you just can put something out there to help people understand, or is there something we can do?
We've been publishing that, yes. It's, the county and the city both have been, through social media, have been saying, you know, this is what's approved, put your, separate your piles. Vegetated debris has to be on its own, because we can't burn a washing machine with...
I understand that.
So we've asked people to separate their, their construction and demolition waste, C and D, they call it, versus the vegetated debris. And we've been trying to tell, they call in, and we tell them that, hey, look, because of this incinerator and the TDEC approved site, it's only good for so long. So we have to get all that debris collected, then we can go to the bulk waste. And people are going and putting, you know, they'll throw their trash can, or their bed, mattress, or whatever in with the vegetated debris, and we can't pick that up. Clamshell goes down and picks up whatever, they can't take it to the burn site. So soon as we get this vegetated debris taken care of, we'll be going through, and that, that should start soon. Hopefully by, we think we're seeing the end of it. If we can get the, the help that we've requested in, we'll be able to start picking up the bulk waste soon.
You brought up social media. Have you got a particular place that you're posting this that I can direct citizens back to?
Yeah, we're doing Hammond County website, yeah.
That's correct. Hammond County website, Hammond County website, I think Hammond County's got a Facebook page it's been posted on. This information is out there best we can without minus mailing something to each home. You know, we, we, from the very beginning, we, when we got the burn site, we asked that it be separated, where we get the vegetative debris to that, to keep it out of the landfill. The C and D waste, we're just having to hold up on, just as Commissioner Richardson has said, we're trying to work solely on that, get that called up. The next day, to follow up on Director Bell's comments, TDEC, TDOT are coming. The point is, don't know when. The other counties are in front of us. They're working on the roads, the state roads, and once they get that, then there's another contract coming that will include Hammond County for vegetated debris pickup. We don't know when that's going to be yet. So as we inch along doing our own work, we may miss that opportunity altogether, because we're, we're at their mercy. They're not coming to run necessarily. With their own away, just don't know when.
But it's on the Hammond County government webpage, so I can direct them?
Yes.
As far as I know, yes, ma'am. I've not visually asked, I saw that, I have seen it in print, that it went to the Hammond County Facebook page. I do know that.
I'll check it, I'll check it. Thank you.
Mr. Naismith?
What about people that's not on Facebook?
I mean...
What about Mr. Jones?
We get phone calls every day.
Happened, he found out about it.
We get phone calls every day.
Call your office.
Yep, we get phone calls every day.
Okay, that's just what I want to know. I've got a...
Do you have any suggestions?
Yeah. Sorry. How about...
Do y'all have a suggestion? I mean, we're...
Yeah, just give them good answers you can.
Well, I mean, how, I mean, you're, you want, they don't, they don't read the paper, they don't have the internet, I mean...
Radio.
Radio.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Put it out there on, on the radio and just, I don't know.
They don't have a radio.
That'd be a problem.
They got to rock.
But you are right. A lot of older folks don't do Facebook. They don't check, they don't check internet. My mother doesn't. And to be brutally honest, she's not caught much of it in the paper, because she's asked me, and so has several other older neighbors have asked.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, for a concise statement. Good job on that. And that concludes our business for tonight. A few announcements we want to make. We do have a December committee meetings coming up on December 9th, and a regular commission meeting will be December 19th, about 5 o'clock, wherever you see it. Do want to take this time to wish our sheriff, he said it was his 27th birthday, I have a feeling...
Again.
Maybe a little more than that, but 50. We do want to wish Sheriff Mullins a happy 50th birthday. Another announcement, thank you, Mr. Long, we got Christmas parade, be December 5th, at 7 o'clock. Commissioner Long has graciously, is going to get us a trailer and a truck, and we really want everybody to be there. I mean, we, we'll have five or six or seven, and...
Terrible about that.
You know, it's, it's a good time. Dress in your red and green, put on your sandy hat. It's, it's really a nice ride through town, and your constituents get to see you, and the kids get to see you. So far, in six years, no one's thrown anything. Commissioners, we have our commission Christmas dinner, December 12th, at 6 o'clock, run a couple of hours. It will be at Russellville Baptist Church. Our host this year is Commissioner Kyle Walker. I understand he's going to do the cooking also. And let me also encourage you, each of you, please, come to that. It's a good time to kick back and see things in a different light. Then we have the Republican Dinner, December 16th, at the city center. I'll have more information on ticket price. That's, that's really a good meal and a good time right there. So, I do want to address a couple of things real quick. I know we want to get out of here. We had a lot of comments on the campers. Again, that's not come to us. That's still in the planning commission's lap. They haven't brought it to us yet. And I do want to, I think I can speak for everyone here, we're not heartless, we're not hard-hearted, we're Christian men and women, believers, and the last thing we want to do is send somebody out of their home. But, I know everybody here says, well, we got to follow the rules, you got to follow the law. That's what we're trying to do. Whether it's been done in the past or not, this commission sitting here right now has to follow the law, the letter of the law. That's what incumbent upon us to do, and that's what we're going to do until we can find a way around it and come up with a better plan. So, the, the harshness of it is not in our hands. You may disagree with it, you may disagree driving, you know, 40 mile an hour through town, you think you can drive 70, but it's against the law. So we'll get something that I hope, and I feel confident, that will be beneficial to every resident of Hammond County. And that's our goal, and that's what we're striving for. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope that your hearts and minds are clear.
Commissioner Hahn, before you dismiss, we had several folks that brought up the subject of the rules and putting it all together. I think it was one of our former mayor's, lack of an answer word, one of his particulars, and they, we didn't get it done. I'm like the rest of them, I'd like to see them in one place so we can access and keep up. We have enough to hunt down, so I would very much appreciate it if, if it would be put on the next agenda to be took care of. Thank you, sir.
He's the chairman, he can get it put on.
Anyone else? We stand adjourned.